I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification, and adopt the agenda. If you can all please stand for a pledge of the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll skip over comments from the audience regarding agenda items. So four is gifts, donations, and recognitions, introduction of the CTE coordinator.
He's there, he is there. Come on up, Tom.
Stand there, sit here, whatever's easier for you.
Whatever you want to do.
If you can just make sure the microphones turn on, we're good.
It doesn't project, so it's just recorded.
It's recording for the video, so you're good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tom Herman, CTE coordinator for Whitnell, Franklin, Greendale, Greenfield, and St. Francis. I was recently hired, as you guys know, by July 1, basically to give our kids opportunities to get out and do some experiential learning, get out and actually experience the world a little bit. Couple of things that are going on that I've been working on. One is near and dear, it's coming up right now, is Trades Day, which is November 12th. We'll have about three to 500 of our students within our consortium of schools, as well as quite a few Whitnell students, that'll have an exposure to 12 of the trades. They'll be doing some hands-on demonstrations, and they actually get to talk with these people about, you know, what do you do? What's your experience? How did you get into this? How much money do you make? Hopefully, that's not the first question. But just to find out, you know, what this is all about. We wanted to give those kids some exposure and some chance to do that. My main job has been, to this point, has been building relationships, and that's with, you know, students, teachers, guidance counselors, administrators, and employers. Lisa gave me the opportunity to speak with the Whitnell Park Rotary Group. Again, just to get the word out, hey, our students are looking to get out of the building and do some authentic learning. We have a connection with the Metropolitan Milwaukee Association of Commerce. What that is, is that we've had 21 engineering groups, engineering companies, that are working with 20 schools. All five of our consortium schools have been selected for that. What that means for Whitnell is Jeff Lemmer, our engineering teacher, has had an opportunity to kind of do some speed dating and kind of find out which company he wants to work with. This week, he voted in kind of rank order which companies he wants to work with, and that'll lead to us making a connection, a one-to-one connection with him. And in the next couple of weeks, he'll have a full day of teacher externship, where he'll do hands-on demonstration, as well as plan another event that'll happen in January, where all of his class gets to come and spend a half a day or a day doing engineering hands-on stuff at that particular company. Ultimately, that'll lead to one student actually getting a fully-paid internship for next summer from each of the schools. So that's a great opportunity. I've been working with Lisa Elliott, the superintendent of Greenfield, on connecting with Aurora. Obviously, everyone in the healthcare is looking for CNAs. That's one of the things that's a big draw for them. But also to get, again, teacher externships for our administrators and our teachers, and then lead to a summer program where we have a three-week rotation, where students have a chance to see multiple different careers in the health science field, again, over the course of like, three weeks or so. Working with Bartolotta Group in order to get, you know, our students who are interested in culinary and hospitality, get some opportunities. And on some smaller-scale stuff, Dave Huss is one of our computer science teachers. He and I, and one of our sophomores, are going to work on a social media marketing campaign with one of our local employers. Just a small project, but again, it's given those kids some real-world application of computer graphics and marketing and so forth. Ultimately, you know, we're building all these connections so that we can have a, you know, sort of a pile of different companies that have, you know, multiple tiers of different opportunities. You know, not every company has the size or the capacity to do long-term things like internships or youth apprenticeships. Some of them just want to do one-day things, where they maybe bring in a guest speaker, or we have a field trip that we would go out to them. Or maybe we could have a kid go there for a job shadow. But we want to have that repository of companies so that they have a multiple number of different opportunities for our kids. The handouts that I gave you are for youth apprenticeship. We are setting those up as well. The one of the top forms is basically just some very generic information about youth apprenticeship. The second one is more specific, about one of the most popular ones. Right now, within our consortium, the most popular one is in healthcare, which is great because there's quite a big need for our students. With the youth apprenticeship, kids actually have a 450-hour commitment. The employer is expected to provide a mentor. The mentor is, you know, not just there to help the student onboard and help them with, you know, different things, but also to give them some, a real big perspective, a much bigger perspective on what is this all about? You know, what is healthcare all about? What is engineering all about? What is IT all about? What is construction all about? Ultimately, too, I guess the last big thing that we're working on is looking to have an expo in spring, where we'll bring in several employers to showcase their companies and talk to all of our kids, our staff, our parents, about, hey, this is what we do. You know, we know a lot of our students say that they want to go off to school, and that's fantastic, but it would be great if they had multiple connections with different businesses, whether it's Briggs, or Rockwell, or even smaller companies, more local companies, that they know that they can come back to when they're all done. Because ultimately, you know, we're all in a fight for, you know, economically, we're in the fight for employees, you know. We want to keep this region as strong as possible. Again, we're looking for those students to have some real-world connections. The last thing I'm going to say is, the five schools together as a consortium are looking to do things on a larger scale, which is very smart. Going on a more regional approach is very important because the employers that we're asking things of, they don't want to be asked five different times. You know, a Greenfield person, a St. Francis person, a Greendale person hitting them up. Let's just have one person hit them up for all of these students and all of these school districts. That's just, you know, again, not everyone has the capacity to do all this stuff anyways, but it's just kind of nice to just have one voice. Last thing I'm working on, I guess, is just working with MATC. Over the years, we've seen some communication and miscommunication and confusion. Hopefully, we can work through that and give up some better communication information flow to our guidance counselors, so that the right information goes to our kids, and they can see the opportunities there. That's all I have. By all means, give me some questions. Otherwise, you can contact me. I'd love to hear from you. Maybe even have an opportunity for an internship or something at your own place of employment. I'd love to hear about it.
Where's the career date?
The career date for, on November 12th, will be down in the New Stem area.
Oh, here.
Yeah, yeah, we're hosting it.
Great.
All right. Thanks much. Thank you all.
Okay, we have teachers here for item 7A. So what I'd like to do is move that up to now, so we can have that presentation now, and then we'll move on to consent agenda. After that, is everyone okay with that? Okay, so then we'll move on to seven reports, a honors program presentation.
Wait, is that on Catherine? Can you turn that? The mic is like, there you go.
So I'm Catherine Zimple, and obviously, I am new here this year, and I've taken on the task of the honors program. So this is somewhat familiar, especially in thinking about the prospectus that was put together for the district, moving from the why to the how to the what of what we do and why we do it at the heart of things. And the reason that I have this on here is that, for me, it was a really nice place to start, as far as what are we doing with this honors program, and kind of why is it coming into being? And a few of the things that I started with, the very first thing I started with was researching by looking at all of the student feedback from last year. So there were about, I think, 20 or so students who were involved last year. I read all of their feedback, and then I actually followed up with them. They got a slightly longer version of this presentation, and I gained more feedback from them on that. So you'll see their ideas infused throughout things. I met with administrators at the building, as well as the district level. I researched college programs at public, private, tech schools, universities, all the different varieties, in-state, out-of-state, and looked at various standards or indicators, so college and career and life readiness indicators, and all sorts of different things, to kind of come together with what is this program ultimately trying to do. So we know that schools are here to educate students, to give them a variety of experiences, but we also know that curricular experiences can't cover everything. So we have clubs, we have organizations, we have sports, we have all of those things, which we also know can't cover everything. And so then we see different versions of classes start to develop, honors, AP, various other different ones. And unfortunately, we do know that honors and accelerated classes sometimes do what we want, and we give greater rigor, but sometimes they just increase speed. And so with all of this understanding, we kind of pool together, and we get the honors program in kind of the way that it exists. So here is the mission statement. I like mission statements. I think they ground us and give us like, a good place to act from. So modeled after our college honors program, the Whitnell High School honors program is designed to maximize the learning experiences for students within and beyond the classroom. It serves as an overlay of differentiated instruction and deeper learning opportunities in conjunction with a rigorous curriculum. The honors program delivers academic challenges and growth opportunities for exceptionally motivated students. Hopefully, you see a why, how, and a what, if you look at that. Some things to highlight with this are some of the changes and some of the consistencies from last year to this year. So as far as changes, it is no longer tied to the freshman academy. So it is for freshman and sophomore students. Part of that is building on the foundations of the independent learning experiences that students received last year, so that they can continue that path this year. It's also that we are looking to just expand the program, that students got some skills, and now they can put those into even more of a leadership capacity this year. Another change is that it's emphasizing more of a college modeled program, which means that it's not about a class. It is truly about being over all of the things that students can be involved in here at the school. So we are looking at serving students in an academic way, but also honing skills that they would receive outside of academics, or those softer skills. That also entails, then, that it's not just core academic classes that are covered. It's all classes, or all content areas, all areas of interest. As far as consistencies, it's still an overlay, even though it's expanded to other classes. And that expansion, again, is for greater student interest, expanding the cross-curricular side. And then, the other consistency is that it's emphasizing academic challenges and growth opportunities for exceptionally motivated students, not necessarily for high-achieving academic students. There are some key criteria that were put together in thinking about those experiences, those opportunities that would be available to students. And these criteria came primarily out of looking at college career life readiness indicators, as well as college programming for honors programs, and what their key criteria are for learning opportunities or experiences, as well as looking at what they wanted in the students who came to them, and then hoping what they left with. So we're looking at expansive innovative thinking, getting students to think more critically or beyond what maybe they would experience in a class, any given class, by helping to communicate those cross-curricular connections. Leadership is the one that the students focused on, those sophomore students who were in the program as freshmen. They focused on wanting more leadership experiences, and so we're looking to utilize them in helping to guide some of the freshmen as they are going along in this process, and then also giving them the opportunity to design more of what they are doing. Ultimately, though, everything is multifaceted and working towards the student learning opportunities, because learning is at the center of everything. So as far as the learning opportunities, in responding to student feedback, there were a few different strands, I would say, that really came to light. One is that students wanted more curated experiences, or more experience, they didn't use that word, more experiences that were given to them. And so I looked at this as curated opportunities. So what can we put together as the adults here, then, and say to the students, you have to do these things in order to be a part of the program? Most of those opportunities will be reflection-based, and there's still a little bit of flexibility for the students to choose some things. And then, on the other side, this is a little bit more like things were last year, which is the student experience, where they have the choice in things. Last year, students had to accumulate 20 units, and we brought it down to 15 units this year to kind of balance out the fact that we have these curated experiences that they have to do. On the student choice side, though, they are taking the brunt of the ownership. They are choosing what they want to do, and even in some cases, creating those learning experiences or opportunities. A little bit more information, then, about each of the two sides. Under the curated side, there are three experiences. One is to participate in a common read. So we're looking to choose a book every year that will be of literary, cultural, historical significance, and the students will complete a project demonstrating their learning from the book. Ideally, hopefully, starting next year, we will be linking up with a program called Great World Texts out of UW-Madison, and it's a grant-based program where students, we actually would receive the books from Madison, and then students would have the opportunity to read the text, work with the text, and actually present at Madison at a state-level conference. So it's something I've done with students in the past, with freshmen in the past, actually, and it's been a really exciting and great opportunity for them to be surrounded by other students who are likewise dedicated. Right now, though, we missed the cutoff, it was last year. So we're looking at working with a text that we provide. The next part is a lecture series, or a speaker series, and looking to pair with other places or other organizations, other clubs and things within the school, to bring people here to speak during the half-hour Falcon time at the end of the day, just like, maybe two, three times this year, and we'll see if that can expand in the future. Otherwise, we're allowing students to also go to speakers in the community, in the county, in the city, et cetera. So letting them kind of find speakers, but also making sure that I'm seeking out people they might want to go see. So I've already got one marked down, a young adult literature author, who's coming to Boswell Books in Milwaukee, who is a high-interest author, and so might be someone of interest. The last part here is participation in a local, state, or national competition. We recognize that when students do work and have to present it, we're following, Lisa or Dr. Olson here smirked at me when I brought this up before at a presentation, but we're following the Buck Institute Gold Standards for Project-Based Learning, which includes public display. And so when the students can showcase their work at that public level, it's something that's really beneficial to them. So we have built this opportunity into freshman academy. So all students in the freshman academy are going to be participating in a letters about literature program that is through the, oh, boy, what is it called? Library of Congress. That's that one I should forget. So through the Library of Congress, we built that one in because we understand that that can be maybe an overwhelming experience for students to maybe seek that out, seek out a competition. And then sophomores are welcome to participate in that particular competition, but they're also welcome to find another academically-focused competition. On the student choice side, again, this is the one that is more similar to last year. There are kind of two buckets. There are curriculum-based, and then there are beyond the curriculum. The curriculum-based are those moments that, as a teacher, we go, that was a really great question, and I wish that I had the time to go down that rabbit hole with you, but I just don't right now. Maybe that would make a great honors assignment for you, or honors program for you, or project for you, to go down. And so it's me helping students kind of pair with other teachers in the building to mentor them through whatever learning experience that they want, as well as working with teachers to figure out what some of those might be, and to present them to students. One that came up that I was really excited about within coding class would be to have a student take their coding skills and then work with a teacher in whatever other content area they want, to actually create a website for something being taught in that class. So we're seeing that cross-curricular depth of learning for the area that they're creating the website for. So it'd be something pretty interesting, and something usable for the teachers who would receive that website. The beyond-the-curriculum side includes a passion-based service learning project. This is where we want to see students take something that they are passionate about and find a way to become civically and community-wise engaged with that passion. And we're looking for students to have an experience that is beyond a single food drive, or beyond some sort of single collection, but actually be able to demonstrate what they're learning. The example I gave was if they're interested in psychology and education and development, of course, this is my area, that they could work on learning about the stages of reading, and then go work with one of our elementary schools and tutor some students who are maybe struggling reading, and like, actually look at what that process is like in play, as opposed to just learning about the psychology of learning. Then the last one here is the student-initiated experience. And for me, this one is kind of fun, because we know, as teachers and as adults, that we don't know everything, and we know that we don't know all of it in many areas that students have interests. And this one allows students to create, truly create, the learning experience that they want to have. And it gives them the chance to construct a proposal, tell us what they want to do, and we'll work with them on whether it's a viable project or not, for whatever different restraints might be on that term viable. As far as students, who we're looking to have in our program, and the students who I've received lots of questions from and started to receive enrollment forms from, these are the things that they are gravitating to. Our research, in that we looked at what do colleges and universities look for in the students who they accept to their honors programs. We took an academic piece out, so again, you're not going to see high academic scores on here. You're not going to see the all As as a requirement for the program. What we do want, and what I want to stress to you, is that it says at the top that they have the skills, they possess those skills, and/or they have a commitment to growing in those skills. So it's important to us to recognize that maybe they're not the most organized to start out, but if they have a commitment to growing in that area, that they would still be somebody who could be, would be successful in the program. Otherwise, the big one that I really want to point out is grit. So we're looking for the student who's not going to be kind of set off or turned off because they have struggled through something, that they're actually going to see those struggles as the true learning opportunities within the program. And then I told students that if I gave them expectations, they should know expectations of me. So just some of the things that I'll be doing with the students, conferencing with them, coaching them through their projects, helping them set their goals and achieve their goals, maintaining a Google Classroom with all of the, kind of, all the forms and everything they have to fill out, have monthly meetings with them, convene evaluation teams when they are ready to submit their work, and seek out learning opportunities, which I've done quite a bit of already, and have met lots of teachers just in that process. It's been really nice for me. And then the timeline that we are on, we've had our informational meetings. Our application process is open until Thursday of this week, and then we're set to begin experiences next week Tuesday.
I should have done a little bit of an intro before we got started, but Catherine did her own intro. But the reason why we brought it forward is I know that there's been questions by the board before in terms of what is this, what does this look like? And last year, it was a little bit unclear. We keep talking about it. And I attended one of the presentations she had given to the parents, and it was very clear, and a lot of the parents I talked to afterwards felt that the presentation was very clear. They finally understood it. And I was at the sophomore one, where parents who had had students in it last year. And so I thought it would be helpful for the board to hear that same presentation, because we talk about it. Instead of having one of us relay what it was, I thought it was clearly laid out in terms of student expectations, or what it was, what it looked like, and some of the direction that we're moving forward with. So that was sort of the reason why, in her own words, to be able to explain to it instead of reiterate. So hopefully, it brings a little bit of clarity when we talk about the honors program, because it still is relatively new at Whitnell. This is only our second year into it. And really appreciate the fact that Catherine had taken the time to meet with the students who were in the program last year, and shared with them, like, what did they like about it, and what didn't work, and really used that as the basis for forming the modifications to the program this year. And I think that was very helpful in terms of getting them engaged and participating. So that was what I should have said at the front end of that.
It's all good.
So the capacity for the program is about 30 students, it sounds like?
I would say that would be great, but also, it doesn't have to have a cap. So the time that I will be looking to meet with students is during their Falcon time, so only on Mondays do they have something that is designated. So I could realistically be working with students all of the other days of the week on their honors components. Depending on the size of the group, how many freshmen, how many sophomores, I could have them together, I could have them separate. That's still kind of in flux until I know, as of Thursday, where we're at.
Okay. And the students that you had as freshmen, do you get the sense that they're all applying as sophomores, or?
So I did not work with them last year, because I'm new this year. I will say that from the meetings, some of them were, like, it was just an obvious, of course, I'm doing it again, and some of them were skeptical, and were interested in hearing things, and actually made appointments with me to come back and ask more questions after meetings. And then some were just flat-out no. As far as reasons, they've ranged from it's extra work to what does this look? I guess the one thing I really didn't say is that, for students, it's not a weighted grade. It's not an extra class, but it is a kind of stamp, is that what you might call it? A stamp on their transcript, saying that they participated and successfully completed the honors program. So there were some concerns about, like, what does that get me in the end? So we talked about those things. So time will tell about how many sophomore applications I get who are returners. But I definitely did reach out to them, all individually as well, as a group.
Yeah, first off, thanks for, I do appreciate you checking the, you know, getting some feedback from the students last year. Until recently, we either didn't do it at all, or didn't do it enough. And we've started to do that in more and more facets, trying to, you know, do surveys of recent graduates and current seniors and whatever. So I think, though it's a common-sense thing to do, it has been way underdone, so thanks for doing that. It makes sense to me, so, but it does take it for a bit of effort. A couple of things. You answered my units thing. I was thinking, okay, what are units, and what were these experiences? So you answered that, for the most part. Thanks. The, I decided just I'd write notes on my computer today instead of getting out a pencil and paper, so trying to get in the 21st century, but just for today, don't get used to it. So you had, you talked about University of Wisconsin, Madison, books, and that kind of stuff. So how can we ensure that, I mean, are we going to leave the book choice up to the Madison program? Because we have a couple of issues here. One is, we're talking about freshman students, right, and maybe sophomore students. Big difference between that and college, big difference between minors and adults. And by that, as we know from a recent experience, that parents still have a say-so, and should still have a say-so over what their minor children are exposed to. But if we tie them to something going on in Madison, and Madison says, here's the book we're reading, you know, and you've got parents of these honors kids saying, that's not acceptable, what do we do? So did you see them getting that there?
Yeah. So I guess I should back up a little bit. The Great World Texts program is not a collegiate-level program. It is a high-school-level program. So I hope that some of those concerns are mitigated by just that age bracket, that the people in the Center for the Humanities who run the program, I can't recall his name right now, but they are conscious of the fact that they are choosing for high-school students. Two years ago, I did the program with freshman students. It was Silence Spring by Rachel Carson. The year before that, it was Shakespeare's The Tempest. So we're talking about generally, like, these very notable texts. Last year was a novel by Jamaica Kincaid. Don't recall the name of it. So I would So I would say that most likely they are choosing a text that is maybe going to have some controversy. I'm not going to say that it won't, but it's something that we can address when that comes up. And then if we would decide, because we would know a year in advance or at least about six months in advance, what the text is, they usually release it in spring. If that's not a text that we want to pursue, we don't have to pursue it. And then on a more individualized basis, I would love to have conversations with individuals, parents or students or whomever as those, as the choice is presented about the merits of the text and the merits of participating in a common read, even if there is some hesitation, I guess, with the text on an individualized basis. But I'm also open to what we can do to circumvent the issue.
Great. I appreciate that. And then the last thing I have for now is you say it's not tied to academic performance, but we're kind of modeling this honors stuff out of, after honors colleges. And honors colleges do tie into academic performance. And I believe the reason for that is because they don't want to have these students, I could be wrong, but it seems to me that they don't want to have these students being challenged with this extra amount and then having, having problems keeping up. So if the students have problems keeping up to begin with, they don't get to stay in the honors college, which is just going to tax them further. So for example, Purdue, you got to maintain a three point five or you're out. And the only time you can enter the honors college is on your initial application, like right now for next year. So why are we not tying it to academic performance to be able to stay in when it's involving extra work?
So I think I can speak to it a little bit, but also the decision was made prior to my being here. One of the things that I would focus on in that situation is that this is an opportunity for students who might not excel academically, who might struggle academically to find where their passion does meet their academics. And hopefully that they are finding that intersection and then are growing, not just within these honors areas or the honors program and the things they have to do for that, but they can also then transfer that, learning those skills and see success in their actual classes. So it's ideally, it's an overlay, yes, but ideally there's a merging of success there. I can also say that I had a meeting with Russ Tillman, the assistant principal, and we talked about a student who is struggling in his classes. And we also know that sometimes when students struggle in their classes, it's boredom. And how can we maybe use this opportunity to help that student succeed in his classes? Because it's an extra challenge. So I don't know if there's anything else.
Oh, I think she answered it right. And I think that, that we also say that high school is at time to try something that's lower risk, that sometimes students may or may not be able to do that. So you're right, it's high risk for a university in terms of that. And so part of it is, I think if we saw a student, as Catherine alluded to, who is not doing well in their classes, that we would say like, you need to like, just like we would advise them in a lot of things with their counseling, like maybe you need to cut back on some activities and that would be part of it. But there are also those ones that can rework, reverse itself in that they aren't motivated somewhere else or are able to expand or are maybe just bored. So I think that it works both ways. But I think we would monitor that and really feel like if they weren't being successful in a lot of different areas, including this, we would sort of analyze it.
I just don't, I don't necessarily agree with your, your low-risk analogy because, you know, some of these kids are, are getting ready for college. And if it affects them negatively, then that's not necessarily no risk compared to what they're after. So, or low risk compared to what they're after. So I, you say college is high risk, here it's low risk. I don't know. It depends on what they're preparing for, for the next step.
I would say it's low risk, just like we tell students, try an AP class out at high school. Because if you're not good and you understand what the rigor is, it's a lot, it gives you an idea of what it looks like. So when I say low risk, what I mean is, is not all of a sudden, there isn't something in their transcript that says you got kicked out of an honors program. Where sometimes that might have that with in college, it might have that piece of it. That's what I meant by low risk. Not that it doesn't have any impact or bearing on all of their activities as a whole, but in terms of going out there and trying it out in high school. Because that's that part where you can try it out with, with less risk than it is in other places. That's, I guess, my interpretation of it.
Thanks.
Yep.
I'll add a couple, yeah. So while you were talking, I came up with my own listener question, so.
I was hoping.
Yeah, so, so what I've got, one of the things I'm thinking about is how can we motivate more students to participate? You know, we're talking about kids who are motivated and I feel like a lot of times when we have opportunities in school, there's the kids who are the known quantities, who are joiners, who are in everything and who are very active and easy to identify and who are probably just obvious choices for this kind of program. But then you've got kids who are like, don't raise their hand and don't, you know, are very reluctant to participate. So it's just a question I'll, I don't need an answer. I'm just going to put it out there, you know. How, how can we make these opportunities available to more kids? You know what I mean? So it's not just like this, select group.
So I will say equity of access is something that I find very important. I did my research for grad school on transition programming from middle school to high school and looking at what opportunities do students become aware of just because they know the right people? And how do we make sure everybody gets the message? And so one thing I did do was present those, those traits of the students that we're looking for, for the program. I presented to the entire high school staff. And actually was, I asked everybody to fill out a form and send me names of people who they thought fit those criteria and not thinking about the high academic achievers. Now, being new, not knowing these names, not having a history with these names, and I didn't go through and check all their grades, I can't tell you how equitable that was at this point. But it's something, the equity of access is something that I am trying to pay attention to.
Okay, great. And then I was also curious about like entry into the program. So people are able to enter their freshman year or their sophomore year. Are there opportunities along the way for kids to jump in or it's not really structured that way?
We haven't talked about it.
Okay, that's okay.
I, yeah, we, honestly, we haven't talked about it. I would foresee us, if we do allow like a second semester entrance into it, we would have to adjust maybe criteria and adjust what that looks like on a transcript. I think that's a bigger conversation than, than we've had so far.
And then another question I had is like, if we look back on this program like in a year's time or two years' time, how will we know what success is going to look like?
I think it will ideally translate into students' performance within their other classes. Hopefully it ties into students having a better understanding of where they want to go post-secondary, whether that's a place, like a studying institution, if it's college or tech school or whatever it might be, or that they've found where they want to go as far as a career pathway or something along those lines. Obviously, we're always hoping that any sort of academic program or any program within a school is going to affect test scores positively. I think we're also going to look at those students who do decide to go on to college. Is there something from these experiences that they can draw upon for those college entrances? Essays and different scholarship essays and things like that? Or are they things that they can reflect upon in job interviews of a time they took on leadership or a time they showed initiative, that those are the things that are the not measurable things within a grade, for instance? Thank you.
Well, I just have a comment. You going, you just started this year?
Here, yes.
That's awesome. I mean, I love what you're doing. Love that you take grasp of it. You're taking ownership of it. You're exploring new things. I'm grateful you're here.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of great feedback about the presentation again, so thank you for coming tonight and presenting to us again. It's great to hear the information. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Five A is approval of October vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of September twenty-third and October fourteenth, twenty nineteen school board minutes. C is approval of ECC requests. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, now I'll take a motion to approve items five, A, B, and C. Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries, move on to six action items. A is a twenty twenty-one international trip to Spain and France. Let me pull up the exact language so we get this right. To approve trip to Spain and France taking place during the summer of twenty twenty-one with a group of students from Whitten High School. Take a first? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one question. Is there a number that we have to meet of students to make this happen?
Nikki is here. She could ask her.
My goal is forty because that would fill a bus. That would fill a bus and we wouldn't have to share with another school. But I'm willing to vote this one. So no, there's not really.
You're, you're taking a bus to Spain and France?
Well, we're taking.
Too long trip. You should take Quinn with you.
Yes, clearly.
But we spend a lot of time on a bus.
I see.
It would be nice to not have to share with another school, is all I'm thinking. But I would definitely take twenty or fifteen, but I don't want to really take more than twenty.
Great. See, thank you. Thank you. On to B, Continuous Improvement Strategic Plan. And the motion is to adopt the presented strategic plan framework for the district. Have a motion to approve. So moved? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Let me try to find it here. I noticed that on the, let's see, one, two, fourth and fifth pages of the, of the strategic plan, this, this document here. I noticed on that that one of the comments I made, the goal on the first page about getting, you know, nothing in there talks about individual stuff and it talks about efficient over, and I suggest effective. I see that effective is in there. You put systematic. I see there was effort. I appreciate that to try to make it, you know, go along with this, what I was getting at. I did, I did not write down all the comments Karen made from the last meeting, but I did notice that the rest of the document seemed to be completely unchanged. Was, I assume it was all looked at, we just not deemed necessary to change anything or try any differences from all the comments that were made last time.
Are you talking about your comments or Karen's? You talk about the comments.
I made, I made one general comment in particular about the personalized stuff and it should be effective, not efficient. And I see that's been changed. But I was just saying that Karen made a bunch of stuff, comments that I don't remember what they were. I didn't take notes on it. But I don't see any changes on the rest of the document. So I just wondered if her comments were not deemed.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay. I don't really remember most of my comments from last time either, so it's okay.
I thought you would have your page of notes with you.
No, that's okay. But most of the stuff that I was offering is like food for thought stuff. And so not necessarily, I need this to be literally in the document as it is right now. Also, it's my understanding that this is a little bit fluid, you know, but we're really looking at the, the main, the main goal items here and that the, as it flows down, it might, the details might inflex a little bit. And I'm honestly comfortable with that for the most part. And that's not to say I won't have a comment tonight, but.
What?
No, and I, and I would agree with that, that they were feedback. And I think what we decided is that most of the things that were there were just to be cognizant as we move forward and not lose sight of it. And so we still have all of that stuff. We've been in conversation, actually done offline with Karen in terms of talking about that. And so it's not that, it's just didn't find its way here because it's not yet there or an action plan will cover it or whatever, so it didn't find its need right at this moment.
Yeah, the only reason it flagged in my head was, I mean, I know there were Karen's comments, not mine, but she had a lot of comments and there was absolutely no other change on this document. So that just made me go, what, what about all the stuff she had to say without me remembering what it was?
And I guess it's my understanding too is that we'll have some view into this as it progresses at certain points. And so, so you know, you might get more comments along the way.
Thanks very much.
Karen, did you have anything beyond that?
Yeah, I want to say I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into putting this together and I'm really excited about what we're doing here. I know that I give a lot of questions, you know, and that's because I have a high interest in these things. So, so yeah, I'm very excited about it. The only specific thing that I had that I wanted to mention tonight is that under student achievements, I'm personally going to look at this goal as deliver high-quality learning experiences and that's how I'm going to think about it. And then I'm really looking forward to, you know, watching this come together and seeing the progress on it.
And in terms of that comment, that was a really good comment and that's exactly how we're interpreting it. In fact, when we looked at the measures for that one, it actually talked about what are high learning experiences. And so we felt like the measures talked about the correlation of that rather than focusing on the model. So that was good feedback and actually caused us to pause a little bit in terms of reading it, but know that that was our intent when we wrote it too.
Okay, great. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries. On to C, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Superintendent Goals. I'll take a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Great. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries. On to D, Co-curricular Code Revisions. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else want to start or am I the only one? Right ahead, John. In the packet, the board member packet, page thirty-seven. Make sure it's thirty-seven. Code violations, thirty-seven. I expressed last time and I maintain my concern that where it says criminal behavior, a student participates in activities resulting in his slash her arrest or formal charges being filed in a court of law. If the school district has adequate and competent evidence that the student participated in the offense for which he, she is charged, a penalty may be imposed pursuant to this code prior to completion of the criminal proceedings. Basically, we can convict him on a much lower plane than the court of law and act accordingly. And, and there, yet there's no comment here about walking it back if they're found not guilty in the court of law. And I just, I just disagree with the concept of, of a double standard and maintaining the double standard. I, I don't like that. Anybody else have any comments on that or you want me to go to my other one?
You can go to your other one. Go ahead.
Okay. And I think that was on page, oh, cyber image policy. Any identifiable image, photo, or video which implicate, implicates slash portrays a co-curricular participant having been in possession, presence, and/or portrays actual use in an illegal substance shall be confirmation, shall be confirmation of violation of the code. Since there's no way to establish timeframe for when, where the image was taken, it should be a responsibility that the co-curricular participant must assume. Basically, if some video or image evidence shows up somewhere that we think is clear enough to show that they have participated or been somewhere where they shouldn't, it's up to them to, to, to challenge it. And then, and things done with video these days and images is, is pretty astounding. So it also says, must also be noted that there may be persons who would attempt to implicate a co-curricular participant by portraying images that may be in violation of this code, of this code standard, which is what I just said. There's things you can do these days with video. But it follows up, this is our rationale for demanding that our co-curricular participants not place themselves in such environments. It's a complete dodge, I think, by the district of saying, yeah, if somebody fakes an image or, or an image can be taken completely out of context or something like that, that's, that's on you. That's not the district's problem. You can still be found in violation of whatever the, the image may implicate. I think that's way overreaching and there's no way I can support this policy.
Okay. Dave, did you want to, or anybody want to speak to that?
I would say that that's a, you know, respectfully, that those are the, that's the same language that other school districts use. And I guess maybe it's the way that it reads in terms of how it plays out. If there's a better way of putting in writing for how it happens.
for how it happens. Having gone through or, or listening to the investigations that happened, I mean, there has to be proof on our side in order for it, for it to be able to, for us to move forward with the consequence. And I guess if it's the way that it's worded that is concerning, until we have proof that it actually is what it is, I don't think we'd ever just look at a picture without doing an investigation on top of it. I mean, that's, it's part of an investigation that we would do with the cyber image, we would never just say, hey, here's this picture, we're going to do it, here's your consequence. There's always an investigation that follows with it as part of that, but it's saying that any image that implicates you, be very careful of taking photos or what the case is, so...
So I understand, I understand the meaning, what it's saying, and why it exists. I think it's overreaching and I can't support it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I honestly am not concerned with how many other districts may have what I consider to be this overreach.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else have any comments or questions on the topic? Dave, is there anything you'd like to add?
Not at the time.
Okay.
Well, have we had any situations planned within this policy?
What I would say is...
If you can speak up.
Yeah, I can give you a general statement, that of recent investigations included, sometimes the, what people bring forward are photos that are posted on social media, and so that becomes part of an investigation. We ask students, you know, is there evidence besides someone saying that, you know, we have this photo, tell us what it is. Sometimes people say, yep, I was there, I did it. If they say, nope, that was two years ago at my cousin's, whatever it might be, until there's absolute proof of it, we still can't, it gives us another avenue on top of it, social media sometimes gives another piece of that, but that was the case. If, if, if people are still denying it, and that is the only piece of documentation we have about an evidence, that in itself would not be alone to implicate somebody. So what I'm saying is that, do cyber images become part of investigation? Yes. Alone, if they aren't substantiated, would not in and of itself give consequences.
That is not what this says.
And that's what I was trying to say, if, if the words are not...
Yeah.
Accurately reflecting, I understand that, so I tried to explain what it's supposed to reflect.
So the words have to accurately reflect what we do or intend to do, because otherwise it, I mean, otherwise it stands on what it is in black and white, because then what happens? It's, it's like, well, you know, I, I had an issue before with students having to sign a piece of paper to the new stuff without, with just being told, read it online, sign the paper. So they had to sign, and then if they wanted to, they could go read it online, that's a foul. Because what happens is, like in your doctor's office, how many people are...
Wait, wait, can we just stay on this?
I am. How many peop...
John, your, your point is that if we have the language here, it could be applied differently than the way that Lisa explained it, right?
My, essentially, my point being...
I just don't want to keep going over it again.
Well, okay, this is really important, okay? It's very important to me, let's not minimize it.
I'm not minimizing it.
I'm trying to save, just let me finish what I'm saying. And I'll leave the doctor's analogy out and that kind of stuff, if that makes you feel better. The bottom line is, what's going to happen is you have the kids sign it, and then later you, you, it's, you can hold them right up to the letter of the law and say, did you sign this? Yes, I did. And by the way, the school board passed this policy, you know, and all the extra language and implications and how we, how we'll actually do it and that kind of stuff is irrelevant.
Okay.
You know, so if it says what it says, and that's not what we're going to do, we shouldn't have the language there, and if it is what we're going to do, I can't support it. So it needs to reflect accurately how we intend to use this stuff.
Thanks, John. Karen?
I don't know exactly how we do this procedurally, but I understand that what we're doing is trying to fix a gap with, we're trying to fix a gap that we had, right? And then, but we have this issue that we don't, I, I think probably should be fixed up, the language could be perhaps improved. Is there a way to, you know...
Well, if the motion to approve, as it stands, fails, then a separate motion can be made to revise it, but if the motion to approve passes, then we just move forward with it the way it stands.
Okay. I just want to be clear, Dave, can you clarify for me? That cyber policy was not part of the corrected thing?
Correct.
That was already in there, so the, okay, I, I just couldn't remember because I'm not seeing my color-coded piece on here, so that was already approved?
That was in the previous...
That was in the previous approval, the stuff that got, that got eliminated, that was, the cyber bully thing was not part of the...
That was not...
Okay, I, okay, I can't find my color, I thought.
And the criminal ha, criminal behavior is the added portion, right? Which I still think is inappropriate.
Well, attention.
But we're approving everything that's on the page here.
Dave, was, can you, can you just come up here really fast?
Because it was color-coded, I thought it was color-coded before about the part that was missing, and I'm not seeing it on this packet. I want to be clear what the part that's added versus other parts that...
It's already been changed and we haven't approved it.
The color coding now.
Changed the template for what we're going to prove on.
So the portion that was inadvertently omitted from the previous code that was approved starts with the code violations, with the criminal behavior, moving down all the way through the cyber image policy. None of that has been changed for the current revisions that happened this past summer with the new infract, infraction matrix to the consequence chart, all of that has been new, but all of this was just inadvertently omitted.
So the criminal behavior through, because last, I'm just, because last packet it was color-coded, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the part that actually was omitted. So it was omitted, but not changed from last year.
Correct.
I just, I want, I, I've lost track without the color coding.
Correct.
So thanks.
So the stuff from the color is new?
No, so the last time, the stuff that was colored was the stuff that was inadvertently omitted, but it wasn't new from last year.
So the cyber policy is also part of what was inadvertently admitted.
It was omitted and out of place.
Omitted but not new, correct, right? That's what I was trying to get there.
Right, so, and I believe these were part of the, like, both policies that were approved by majority vote as part of the, either when we first moved over or the end of the...
No, 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 it has nothing to do with board policy, this is a handbook. This is a, this is a co-curricular handbook. This isn't a board policy.
Well, I think the handbook needs changed then, and it's up in front of us now.
So does this come from WIA?
The change, or...
Oh, the handbook template.
A, a lot of it comes from the WIA, a lot of it is based off of what the, the district is, is choosing that they want to move forward with, but...
Should we pick and choose from what, make this up?
No, not that you make it up, it's, it's...
To create it.
Correct, yes. So we take the WIA regulations and we follow those, and then anything else that we want to add, we can add to it. So for example, like the, the consequence chart is, we can determine what that consequence is, but from other aspects, when it comes to drug use or anything like that, we do follow the WIA guidelines.
WIA does require us to have a handbook, they don't dictate what the handbook is, obviously they want local discretion on things. The athletic code and activities code handbook is a continuation of our student handbook, which adds that extra layer on top for those individuals who are part of things that are outside of the, the normal school day. But in our normal school handbook, that's where we follow our first line of investigation. So if we found out that a student was at a party drinking, we would investigate that equally as we would if they were an athlete, not an athlete. And we probably would have very similar consequences, it's, it's then ultimately what happens then for them in terms of their eligibility for competitions or activities.
I don't want to be misconstrued as being soft on crime, because I'm not, but I'm a, I'm a due process kind of person.
Absolutely. And, and that's, that's our, our take too, is that we want to investigate everything and have the facts correct, and not issue consequences to individuals that we cannot substantiate that something happened.
I, I believe that, Charlie, I really do, but I just think the language needs to match the, the intent of the, of the folks like yourself in the district.
So, and I, and I guess I, I believe that the language does reflect our intent to investigate.
I'm pulling up the standard student handbook now. Kevin, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just agree with, with Dan's saying as far as indicating someone before they're convicted. With the language that's in there right now, it talks about, I'm sorry, it talks about it being completed prior to the criminal proceeding, but it also talks about, hold on a second, sorry, I just lost my train, I'm going on the iPad here. It talks about it has adequate and competent evidence, the student participating in the offense. I think if we're doing our investigation and we find something out that it looks pretty obvious, that something's occurred, I think we're kind of a bit within our right, as this is a added thing, this isn't something, you're not entitled to participate in extracurricular activities as far as code of conduct goes. I think we're within our rights to do that. I think we're going to probably cooperate with any, if, if there's something to do with the student and the police come by, we're going to cooperate with any investigation anyway. Now, I do agree that if, for some reason, the criminal investigation turns out to prove or not prove that there was a crime, then obviously we need to backtrack and rectify the situation, but I still think it's an added, there is a, it's an extra thing you're not entitled to do, and it's a privilege to participate in anything extracurricular, so I think we're able to kind of hold a higher, not want to say hold a higher standard, but be a little more strict in what we do.
Part, part of the way I look at this is, you know, we've been talking about drinking and, you know, substance abuse, but if it turns out to be something that's perhaps a rape case or something like that, then you would probably want that person removed from the team, just for the other people on the team, for what the kid would be going through at any sporting event. I think that's probably what some of this language is about, too, if you take it to that extreme, you know, hopefully we wouldn't have to deal with anything like that, but I, that's where I see it being applicable.
Yeah, we were trying, because there is a separate one on chemical health violation, but I think this would be, let's say there was video footage of a person doing that, and yet they have to have their due time, keeping that person participating would probably call, cause more disruption to the student body. Anytime we investigate, you temporarily force someone there, I mean, have someone out there especially, and that, it says that we had significant, or whatever the phrase is here in terms of having adequate and competent evidence, so it's not random, it seems like, let's say there was a video that was produced of a, a person doing it, and we felt competent in that thing, that would cause a lot of disruption.
Right.
Keeping that person participating in a club prior to, I mean, we're assuming that it's that obvious, we're not talking about something that we can't tell.
Well, and it also says he's already been charged, so there's already been a criminal investigation. Now granted, they aren't a hundred percent, but, you know, let's presume, I would hope that they are doing, the police are doing their due diligence and aren't just finding the wrong person, but that's, kind of like the other part of this where it's not just, oh, we heard this, we're going to kick you off the team, it's, there's a lot more meat to it, it's just, I think, waiting between the charges and what could be a court date, six months to a year from when the charges actually are.
So somewhere along the line, legal has looked at this?
That's, that's a good question, because this is sort of, and I'm going from your, like, this isn't new stuff, this has existed prior to my term, so I can't answer that accurately, I can research to see at what point. I, I'm hoping that at some point, when initial handbook or whatever is done, that legal would have looked at that, but I can't tell you that, sitting here right now.
I appreciate that.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
No, I, I know, whatever.
No, you don't approve it?
No.
All right, okay. Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. On to E, Purchase of Snow Plow Truck. And again, the verbiage for this will be recommendation to approve the purchase of a plow truck now to exceed fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
No, this got, sorry.
Well, hold on, we have to follow this, hold on. I'll take a motion to approve.
Some of them.
Second?
All right.
Kevin, you, you've got the second.
All right.
Go ahead, Mike.
So this, this got messier throughout the day, so I apologize if there's any confusion in what we're trying to put forward here. So what ended up happening today is that none of the vehicles that are in the three proposals are available until May. So I believe there's been May snow before.
Thanks for jinxing it.
Probably will be, since I just said that.
There is a year.
It's, yeah, there's a year. So, so that obviously is, is different, as, as this has evolved over time, September, you know, kind of being like, this, this needs to happen, realizing we really can't bring it forward till October, timeframes, we thought, okay, the latest January, and then today, really it's been the GM strike that has caused a huge backlog in, in these particular vehicles. So we are, we are down to one particular option, which we did not bring forward. We had the original proposal, and it was four grand above, and even above a, a previous quote by Lynch. However, given the circumstances now, we are bringing it forward as an option, so there's a couple of different things to look at. The vehicle that is on a lot and that we can immediately obtain is a brand new twenty-eighteen Dodge Ram plow truck, twenty-six miles on it.
Yep.
From the, whatever, airport to whatever.
Couple hot laps.
Okay, sorry, a couple laps around. So this is the vehicle, however, you'll notice that the price is four grand more, forty-five hundred more than the original that we had brought forward, which was one from Holtz. Talking with Holtz today, as Todd can affirm, they actually suggested, why don't you look at a different vehicle than a GM? We can't serve, we can't help you in this regard if you need something before me.
Talk about why? Why GM vehicle?
Why Holtz's GM versus...
Oh, no, they're just saying the...
Because of the strike.
Because of the strike, that's what I said.
He didn't mention it.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 because of, of the GM strike that are on backlog. So they had suggested looking at, at these particular vehicles. We contacted Lynch today, we tried to get the price down, they would not budge on this particular price, and quite frankly, I don't blame them. If there's not a shortage, or if there's a shortage, which there clearly is, I probably wouldn't come down on the price either. So not getting a vehicle now, Todd, you want to talk about maybe what that looks like? If we would indeed wait and not have it available this summer, or until summer, essentially what we'd be doing?
So if, if we weren't to approve the purchase of a vehicle right now, what I would end up doing is probably contacting a few rental companies and seeing if we could potentially rent a piece of equipment as it's needed for the heavier snows, which are the bigger concerns. When I say a piece of equipment, I'm thinking like a skid steer with a plow on it, something that's still mobile, something that we can still use down at Hales Corners, that'll give us the ability to plow. And again, this would only be for the larger snowstorms. If we get a couple inches at a time, we can, we can make it through with the two trucks that we have, but if we get something larger, we're going to need a third piece of equipment, otherwise it's going to be a huge challenge for us.
Would that address the seltzer, Sheila?
It will not.
So what would we do for that?
We would still have to use the same seltzer that we've been using and do multiple runs to the Hales Corners BPW for sulting.
Part of what I, I don't like about that particular option is that you would be still getting a truck, which we still maintain is needed, a plow truck, versatile piece of equipment around the district, yet we'd simply be tacking on rental costs, which in the end could be a wash regardless, if, if, you know, we go down that route. So as far as the recommendation goes, the recommendation on our end would be to approve for the sixty-one, seven, seven, five for the Lynch vehicle, and have that essentially right here at the beginning, plowing the snow tonight, no, maybe for, maybe for Halloween. Be plowing immediately and have this vehicle in our possession, and it's a one-time cost, it's in our budget this year, we take care of it, there's not year after year rentals and the things that we have to take on.
What was the original line item for this estimate?
Fifty-seven five, yeah.
Okay.
There was a Holtz recommendation.
Okay. And the, this will still have that angled plow that we're working for?
Yes, it includes the same plow as was quoted with the Holtz vehicle. Service it. We'll, we'll have to take it down to Lynch for service. Will I go? Yes. Or we can take it down to Burlington, either one.
Jack, he just drives it home and gets it fixed.
Where's Lynch?
Lynch is either in Burlington or Maguano. Lynch is either in Burlington or Maguano, 43 and 83.
Only a fifteen minute drive.
Jackie speeds.
Yeah.
So Jackie just volunteered.
To take it home on those next, it needs to be serviced.
It's only only fifteen minutes from here to the exit. Lynch has that the exit.
Okay.
So what we'd be asking is essentially to turn down this motion and put in the new motion for the 61-775.
So I appreciate you explaining the $4,000 increase for a two-year older vehicle, even though it's a new vehicle, because I was going to ask that, I'm like, what happened here? So that makes sense. I mean, I don't know why it's more, except for the market's probably a little bit more behind now because they've been on strike longer. But what you didn't address was why not Ford?
So I had that Ford quoted, the 2019 Ford. That one actually sold.
And, okay.
That was a 2019, it was on their lot and that vehicle sold.
How, yeah, is it 29 F-350? I've got the stuff pulled up from last two weeks ago. So, and that was 52-605, and it doesn't look like that included the.
It included the plow.
The plow, but it did include the dump, I believe. So what, and the plows like seven thousand and change or something?
It's a little over eight. I actually negotiated a little bit on the price of the plow with Lynch. That was kind of what I used as the negotiating tool, because they weren't willing to budge on the price of the truck.
So how wide of a net are we casting here, though? Because, you know, searches on the internet, I mean, I can't believe that there's not
Good question.
comparable vehicle through AutoTrader or whatever.
So when we reached out to Holtz this morning and we talked with our salesman who we dealt with on the purchase of the police truck, he actually indicated to me that he did a search 500 miles away. That was his radius from Hales Corners to search for a vehicle. And they had nothing that was available that was on anyone's lot, which fits the criteria of the truck that we're trying to buy.
Can we not search further out?
I'm sure we could.
Was that all makes or was that just the GM?
That was a GM truck.
More about.
Right, so I guess my question is, and I'm not, I think this is okay, but I'm just wondering in terms of doubting our eyes on that, if we should check other Dodge and Ford dealers in the area to see if there's, and just to quickly see, okay, is there anything else out there that might be a better deal for us? But then it sounds like if we're doing service local, is that part of it? Or can you buy a truck from Appleton and get a service here, you know?
Sure. Typically, if you buy a Chevy, you can take it to any Chevy dealership for service.
Right, right.
I would note, though, that when I did reach out to Lynch and ask about the Chevy that they provided us a quote for, which was also a 2020, they did confirm what Holtz told me was that we wouldn't see a vehicle until spring. They're also a Dodge dealer. So they indicated to me that they have nothing on their lot that fits our specs besides these 2018.
And so you're saying, looking at other, are there other, is there a reason we went with Lynch, Holtz, or Hiller? Just, is that your question? Why did we just go to those three companies?
No, my question is, like, if we were urgent looking at a GM vehicle, now we're shifting our focus to a Dodge vehicle, should we shop the Dodge vehicle in the area? Has that been done already or can we do that just to see, okay, are there any other of these 2018 sitting around where? So maybe we should say, instead of saying this is the exact one, maybe we say not to exceed, you do a quick check and then, you know.
If you would do a not to exceed, that would be, that would at least buy us some time.
Sure.
But knowing that the 61-775, if we're as comfortable with that, to give us that parameter to work with that, that can absolutely be in action.
So, sorry.
That's, that's all I.
I'm just concerned about why they didn't cast a net on the internet or whatever through Ford for the Ford stuff to do a dealership transfer or something to the, to Hiller here? Because you said they did a GM search for 500 miles. We could go further than 500 miles, we could ask Lynch to do a Dodge search, Hiller to do a Ford search. I mean, I just wonder.
I can absolutely do that.
I mean, I would rather see that and know what we're getting and at a lower price, hopefully.
There are costs associated with that.
Yeah, to do a search?
No. Okay, I mean, a vehicle brought here. While I don't like to pay more. If you can do the searches in a reasonably quick time, because who says this vehicle was not going to be gone?
Well, and that is one of my concerns, and actually, we were concerned that those, that vehicle was gone already because with the shortage, they're, we're not the only district and we're not the only company that plows snow that's going to need a truck. And we do, we do take that chance.
I just read article in Sunday's paper, it spoke to this, I realize that. But they spoke to larger vehicles and they're not there.
Right. Now, to clarify what I said to you at the last board meeting, when you asked about, you see all the trucks for Holtz, I said that those were sold. They are, most of those are sold, but they didn't have anything that fit our specs on their lot. Everything that's on their lot that you see is actually much bigger than what we're purchasing. They're two, three-ton bump trucks.
Bigger, you said?
They're bigger.
Oh, yeah.
So is Lynch holding this truck for us till tomorrow or something?
They are not. The last communication I had with Lynch was this proposal. I responded to them and asked if there was anything that they could do to get us closer to the number of what we had talked about. And the last response was that was the best that they could do. They'll sell the truck to somebody, whether it's us or a different contractor.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand, you're asking us to not approve the first thing?
Correct.
Make a new motion for the adjusted and then we vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else, any other comments? Kevin, anything?
No, I just want to make sure, I understand what everybody's saying, but also it's going to get to the point where we can't micromanage all the things too and factoring in the cost of the time that each of our employees is going in researching this stuff. The same thing I said, the cost of trying to transport a car here as well. And the looming snow that could become a thing.
So someone probably.
Okay.
I guess the big question is, where does the money come from?
This is a line item budget that's in Todd's budget already. I mean, it's there, and that's why I say that we would, that's why I say let's take care of this one-time cost instead of continuously saying, we're going to rent a skid steer year after year after year where we're taking on four, five, six, whatever the rental cost's become. This is a line item that's in the budget. We would prefer to just knock it out, have this piece of equipment and set it and forget it.
Okay.
Jonathan, can't you just amend the motion to a different amount?
Can we, since it's already been first and second at that amount?
You can make an amendment.
Okay.
The person who made the motion can make the amendment.
I agree.
And the person who seconded it has to approve.
I'm fine with that. So then I will, the amended.
I don't know who made the motion.
Might take longer than just.
Okay.
Okay, so I will amend the motion to approve the purchase of, however you want to word it, the snowplow truck.
Plow truck, yep, not to.
Not to exceed the amount of $61,775.70.
Yeah.
Should round up?
Thank you. All right, Kevin seconded it. Any other discussion before we finish, or? Just a question that you.
We need the amendment, then we will vote it.
Yeah.
Just a question that you try to do a little bit broader search in other brands. Okay. But I know that you're, you know, you're trying to be approved with the tax dollars, I appreciate it. Okay, so all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Opposed to the amendment? Okay, then all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Saying non-motion carries, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to F, Falcon Field Video Board. I'll take a motion to approve.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Dave, come on up. So again, the recommendation for tonight is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Daktronics in order to fund a new video board on Falcon Field. And this would start the one-year contract time to secure the sponsorship.
Correct.
But it doesn't identify which package we're going with?
So it's, what came out of the Finance and Facilities Committee would be option four, that if we are going to do this, let's do it, was the recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee. I verified two things today with Daktronics. One is, let me understand that if we do not raise these dollars, there is no obligation to purchase anything. Correct, great. Number two, if we do not raise the 240, 250, whatever that number is, that would be paid off over a five-year period, do we have the option of backing off and doing another of the three options? Yes, of course, I'm going to say yes to that. The question is, what the video board offers in number four, if you say, we're no longer doing option four with the big, beautiful screen and all the sound and the commercials and all that good stuff, and we're now going to do option one, two, or three, and it's not what we promised, do you still have your sponsors? Are your sponsors going to say, you know what, we thought we were getting that 30-second commercial with your brand-new Dolby Sound or whatever thing is out there, we're no longer going to give you the 15, we're going to give you eight or six or whatever that number is. What picking an option does is allows us to be able to come up with a package that we are able to present to potential sponsors and to give them some accuracy in what they can expect. So when we say we're going for option four, that's what we are going to present and that's what we then hope our sponsors rally around and want to be a part of. Something you want to add?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that was my understanding of the whole process, that, you know, if, the whole part of this, and my understanding is with the marketing that Daktronics will help us with initially, is kind of, if we get that early success, usually the whole program becomes a success. If we're struggling at the nine-month mark to meet it, it's probably time to re-scope and rethink the whole project, that it's probably not going to be a go. And then we need to rethink, okay, is it, are we asking too much for our sponsors? We need to reoffer what we do? And then we can take that time to do that weekend.
Yeah, and I mean, keep in mind, if we're successful here, even if it is, if it's the 250 and we get, you know, a lot of buy-in, that 250, while yes, for five years, it's going to go towards the scoreboard, you have success with that and you reoffer it for another five years, now we're looking at dollars that aren't dedicated towards a scoreboard anymore, that we are bringing in additional sponsorship revenue to now do whatever, whatever with. So that's why we say, let's, if we're going to go for it, let's go for option four, let's present that, see what the taste is or what the piece of it is. That's what came out of the Finance and Facilities Committee.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, so I have concerns when it comes to the overall cost of this, okay? Because you're talking about a quarter of a million dollars for a scoreboard. And to me, it's sort of, it's a want, okay? So we don't need a quarter of a million dollar scoreboard in the district. It's not, it's not essential to our purpose. It's, and so when I think about where we're putting our time, where we're putting our energy, where we're putting our community goodwill and support for the school, is this where it belongs? And I have a real hard time swallowing that, you know, I was like, oh, it's for snowplow trucks, you know? It's, so I have concerns about putting, putting all of this energy and money, even though it's not our money, it's money from the community that they're supporting Whittonall with. And is that what we want to put our community's support toward is, you know, a great big scoreboard? And I say that it is a want and not a need, because I can go to the football game and I know what the score is. So I just don't know if it fits with, with our priorities. And being a financially conservative person, I hesitate to go there.
All right, Kevin, go ahead.
Well, you say you have to go there, we're getting this based off of sponsorships, because that's the idea behind it, that we're not going to spend any taxpayer money on this, the sponsors are going to cover it, and the reason they're going to cover it is because they get the sponsorship. They're generally not just going to give us a big check just to give us a big check just for whatever it is we need to spend money on. It's a way to pay for something without having to pay for something and still build the community relationships with the businesses. So I struggle to understand why you struggle to, I guess, go along like that.
I'm very impressed with what you're pulling, I really am. My answer to you is, hell, yeah, yeah, why not? It's outside money, it's people from our community, hopefully, that are willing to put their name on something and to back the district, but they want something for it. I mean, I pay for advertising, I want something, I want to get leads out of it, simple as that. So I don't, all due respect, I don't, I don't agree with your side of your viewpoint at all.
Kevin, do you have anything else you want to add?
Uh, hold on a second. All right, sorry about that. Uh, no, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Go ahead. So I, I agree with Karen on, to an extent, but also, Kevin, one of my problems is, there's the $245,000 proposal, which takes down everything that's out there. I don't know if it uses the existing beams in the concrete, but it takes everything else out. Do we get anything, any kickback for the hardware that's perfectly functioning that they take down?
No, because that is currently ours, so whatever we want to do with what is taken down, we can choose to do what we want with.
So that could be moved to another field?
We have that option if we wanted to, but we'd have to put up a structure to support that with electrical and so forth.
Sure, but it's an option.
It's an option, yeah, it's our board to do what we choose with it at that time.
So my problem is the difference between number, option four and option one is about $113,000 and change. That's that much more advertising we've got to sell, but that we have to push at the kids in the crowd and that kind of stuff. There's enough names and labels and advertising on things in everybody's lives anyway. I'm not looking for extra reasons to advertise. But aside from that, you know, really, if we want to spend some money, whether it's somebody else's money, not taxpayer money, but advertisers' money or not, all we need to do to have a functional video board out there is option one for $132,000, which would be much easier, if it's easy at all, it would be somewhat relatively easier, I would think, to get $132,000 with advertising. But leaves everything else in place and just replaces the part between the Whittonall sign on top and the score part on the bottom, just replaces that video core with a new functional video screen, which is where this started to begin with, you know? And I see it over and over again. It happened with the, well, with the football field itself, where they started out looking at this and that and they ended up going with the most expensive option. I, I'm not in favor of it. I'd be, I could be in favor of option one, but not option four. Okay. Anybody else?
The only other thing that I'm going to add is, when we look at where we're putting our efforts, is that, do we want to take our time and put our time into going out and seeking sponsorships? Is that the best use of our time? Or is the best use of our time going out and building programs for kids to participate in? And, you know what I mean? So it's going after the scoreboard? Or is it doing, providing learning experiences? And so to me, that's where I'm thinking, it's not, it's not just the money that's outside money, but it's also where we're putting our time and energy for this effort.
It's not going to be the whole district, though, seeking this dollar, this sponsorship. It's not like Reese and Charlie and Mike are going to spend a chunk of their day every day doing it.
Correct, it's going to be, correct.
Dave in that department.
And that's, and that's valuable.
The whole district.
Correct, but that's valuable time, yeah.
Didn't, didn't we just spend a bunch of time going over a truck and telling someone to spend more time digging into that when there's a need for it?
I think you're talking about making a couple.
It just annoys me why we went one way at one and now we're going the other way to another.
I think.
We're trying to pay for something, or not even pay for something, trying to get something more or less for free, build partnerships and, which will ultimately lead to opportunities for our kids as well and our community.
Go ahead, Karen.
I was going to say, I think there's a difference between getting a couple quotes on a snowplow truck and spending three or more months seeking sponsorships. I think there's a difference.
I don't know that we're going to spend three or more months on something. I think there's a proposal put together, we pitch it to the people we need to pitch it to, and we see what happens. It's not spending every waking minute of the day. It's not spending every waking minute of the day, not to mention, I think, part of Mike's job is, is just that, is to try and facilitate those partnerships and running the business, same thing with Lisa, so.
And we might end up at option one, we don't know.
Exactly.
What kind of weight can the assembly we have out there, state the structure that we have out there, support? The reason I'm asking is because of the two-thousand-pound difference between option one and option four. So, we go with option four, next thing we know, we've got to, uh, put more money than what's on here into building up a structure to support it, because it's not, that's why I'm asking.
Sure, according to Daktronics, they said the structure that we have would be viable for these, but they wouldn't know specifically until they actually dove into it. There could be miscellaneous a little bit here, a little bit there, depending on, on when everything was put down. Yeah, I would not be for creating a whole new structure out there. I mean, we've been told that this is, this structure can support, but when we sign the MOU, they'll come out and do their due diligence and see what that means. Todd, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, because I don't know if you've had much conversation, but as far as the support out there, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Option one wouldn't include, though, the, the actual scoreboard part, the weight of that, that's already out there, right?
Correct, correct. And, and just want to emphasize-
So that could be the two-hundred, whatever.
There has been some concerns with our audio system as well, and the option four would take care of that as well because of the sound system that'd be added part of it, so that's where some occurred costs are as well, as we're taking care of, more than just the video board, we're taking care of a, a sound system.
So with the sound system, we might be trying to spend a lot of money to replace the sound system, but all we might need to do is move, is move the speakers to a different location.
And, and there is some extensive cost to that as well, talking to other sound system companies about a variety of other sound system issues that we've had, there is significant cost to moving things like that. Hopefully, this would solve a lot of that.
Hopefully.
Okay, anybody else?
So, I just want to say, I think it's an excellent opportunity to create and solidify partnerships with our community members, and I think with that comes a stronger school district, and when we then reach out to them again for something else, we've created that stronger partnership with them. So I could also give the kids opportunities in the video world that we don't have right now, and I am definitely in favor of going forward with this.
I'm going to align with what Todd is doing on the CTE side as well.
Tom, yeah. May I add? If we're talking about creating video opportunities for kids, my only question would be, is this the only way that we can give kids experiences to learn how to use video and work with video? And is this the most effective way to teach kids how to use video? So I think that, while it does offer some exposure for kids to participate, it's not the only channel available.
Sure. And, I mean, that was similar to what they did with the referendum, right? Where students could see what's going on with the construction companies, that was an added bonus to it. Right? Anybody else? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries? Thank you. On to G, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty tax levy, so the recommendation would be to approve the tax levy of sixteen thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, excuse me, sorry, sixteen million, five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, ninety-four dollars for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. I take a motion to approve?
So moved.
So seconded.
Seconded.
Okay. Any comment, discussion, Mike, you want to?
I just want a buck short.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, that's embarrassing.
You know, I had you up on a pedestal, Mike.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Quickly they follow.
I know.
Anybody have any questions?
I mean, it's, it's good news, I mean, it's good.
Yeah, it's good.
It's really good.
We like it, strong work, he's still our favorite business manager. Okay. All right, then.
I don't know.
All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sing none, motion carries. And then, H is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, and the recommendation to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty original budget as presented in the board packet in the DPI approved format, and take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to seven reports, we already did A, so we'll move to B, SWSA report with Quinn and Lisa.
Well, Lisa and I both attended this past month's meeting, and we got some updates on what's going on. There are several bills in front of the legislation right now, legislators right now, kind of gave us a rundown of what was going on with them. We also broke off into smaller groups, and we're, we're working on our bullet points for legislative advocacy, and I think that was it. And then this past, um, on the Thursday, Thursday, I had the opportunity to meet the, with other members of the, of the SWSA, to meet the state superintendent and two of her assistants at the Milwaukee office, and it was, it was, it was pretty humbling. We, we all said something about what's good, what's working in our district, what we're struggling with, had good rapport with her, she, she's, she's been in the game a long time, either a teacher, administrator, and then now eighteen years, I believe, at DPI, and she was, um, in charge of, uh, special ed, I believe. And, she know, I mean, you know, with questions and concerns that we had, she, she knew. She knows, she knows, she knows the grain, the groundwork and what's going on, and she'll be good for the, for our state. And, and it was, uh, it was the first introduction of who we are. We're a large group, a large emphysey group in southeast Wisconsin, and she's also going to be speaking at our January meeting, so this is a good, it, it's a two-way street, you know? We ask for things, and, and they ask for our input, our expertise on matters. It's happened before, and it'll happen again, so it was, it was very enjoyable.
Anything to add?
No, covered it well, thanks for representing Whitnall.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, on to U.C. School Board PTO and Liaison Reports.
So I went to the meeting, I had missed the first one, and I went, and I had two referrals, I got a checkup on them. I know one answer already, and another one was given to Logan about Whitnall and before, so we'll see what transpired there, so.
Talking about music, music boosters. Oh, you go ahead, you were there.
Yeah, both are.
That's true, yeah, go ahead.
So, they were talking about their fundraising coming up, so they're going to be selling city tins for, just before the Christmas time, for that, for all the music programs. They were looking for more incorporation of parents, they were talking about a way of streamlining how to support students in summer programs and things like that, and setting up criteria that they wanted to use to support the students who are in the programs. And then, the, Mr. Zanz was reporting that the pep band was going well, but then, we had discussion about the marching band, and about how it's been difficult this year with the, for the student participation with the families, and that he's working towards trying to develop that, focusing more on the pep band to get excitement for the performance in those venues, and then work on the marching band in the future.
All right? And I missed the Falcon Booster meeting, so I have nothing to report, I didn't make it there. Okay. Anything?
Park and McBoard, we did meet a couple weeks ago, the only thing that, of interest that I can remember is that they are creating an ice skating rink at Conkle Park, and so that should be opening sometime in December, probably around Christmas vacation time, depending on the weather, so.
Kevin, anything from HCE?
Uh, no, there was no meeting in October, the next meeting is November nineteenth.
Great. And then, did you attend the-
The middle school? Um, I did not, but I wanted to thank Mr. Antheline, because I know they did a presentation on bullying, which was well-received, and then, Bob, I wasn't sure if you had anything to add for the WMS PTO?
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Our next meeting's the thirteenth.
All right.
I don't remember, I'm trying to remember, but the prime, most of it was the conversation beforehand. Some excellent student voices, some of the live voices, it was pretty colorful, I don't know, I don't know, the struggles they have, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Then we'll move on to G, referendum monthly financials.
Here they are.
Anybody have any questions?
Waiting for one more bill, big bill, from C.J. Schmidt. Tingling with anticipation for that last bill.
Hey, where does, how is the punch list doing?
Uh, I believe, Todd, punch list, that HCE, everything else is finished.
David, parking lot?
The HCE, the parking lot's in, and a few items this Friday.
Uh, we actually got a partner with a punch list, and we have to last week, Thursday, Friday, on the way to the schools, somewhere we'll be able to do some punch-up meetings, and small things that were left over. Parking lot got paid over the weekend, at HCE, and, uh, strike this afternoon, working on landscaping right now, and everybody who needs will be able to have that second parking lot.
Great. I may have missed it, um, where are we on that, replacing the concrete they had to cut up? Todd?
Replacing that concrete from the, that they had to cut up, did that get done?
That's all been replaced.
Thank you.
That was not one of the four, the, the curves, or the one parking lot.
Thanks. Anything else? We might-
I'm not, under budget, we're not going to, as fast as we're going to.
We're, we're going to be under budget, yeah, we're going to be under budget. Part of it is going to be with some cost savings, and some different parts, but a lot is due to the crew and the trust that we have, so we'll, so we'll have three hundred dollars each.
So maybe it breaks up to us as far as what you want to do?
I like that, I like that all separated, so maybe we can, next semester.
Okay. All right, that's it, on to eight items for future consideration. Okay, on to nine announcements. Okay. And then, eleven, meeting debrief, anyone?
This was a lot of work, Todd.
Yeah.
I would just say with the, you know, the PTO liaison, it's important that we are there as a presence to hear from the, from the groups, so if you're not going to be able to attend a meeting, reach out to me, or we'll try to find someone to cover for that. We want to have a presence there, and especially if people start hearing, oh, well, someone's at HCE, someone's at middle school, why isn't anyone at Hertan, or where the kids might be? Hey.
That's not a good example.
I'm looking at you. No, but I'm serious, I mean, I, I think no one has been at the middle school so far this year, right? For the PTO meetings?
Aye.
Okay, so, we just need to have a presence there, so again, if you need help, please reach out to somebody so we can have a board member there, because otherwise, it gets lost, and we don't want their message being missed.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.